But I'm waiting for the, with the recording in progress.
It'll be on YouTube.
It'll be on Zoom.
We're all set.
We're good.
Good evening. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the December 12th, 2023 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall at 229 Main Street and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter and just select Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Karina, I'm going to say your name wrong. Ochoa? Thank you, is our zoning board coordinator and will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your questions or comments. Please mute your mic until called on to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission for something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes annotated, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at the meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Myself, Mary Ellen McKay as Chair, Mr. Rob Shaw, who is seated next to me as our Vice Chair, and Mr. J. P. Boucher, who is the clerk, sitting next to Mr. Shaw, and then Mr. Mankara and Mr. Lionel, and Mr. Neely is an alternate. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, our Deputy Planning Manager. We have Ms. Kate Poirier, and we also have Ms. Karina Ochoa. I do not see Matt or Sam. We can start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. There is no Board member on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. Mr. Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Mankara.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay. I am also present. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Before we begin the first case, I do want to bring something up to the Board because I may or may not have to recuse myself from this first case. Fellow Board members, 10 years ago, I worked for Gateway's Community Services, and my special needs daughter receives services from Gateway Services. Can I give a fair and impartial, you know, opinion? Yes, but should the Board feel or should it make it easier, more fair, more clean, I will recuse myself.
I believe it. It's up, Madam Chair, it's up to you to decide. It's not up to us.
I understand, but I like, I like the opinion. I mean, it's, it's just more clean, more fair. Mr. Mankara, I see you pondering.
I mean, really, I think it comes down to whether or not you feel that you can give a fair decision. 10 years ago is certainly a significant passage of time, and I mean, just in my opinion, you're not currently employed. If you don't have a relationship with that organization currently.
No, I have a relationship. My daughter receives services.
Okay.
And see, therein lies the rub. And so, that's why I looked at you. You're an attorney, sir. I trust you.
I wouldn't want to substitute my, my, my choice for yours, but.
Yeah, I, in the interest of fairness, I think if Mr. Shaw doesn't mind, I will recuse myself.
Are we still the five members present?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKay. As Ms. McKay noted, I will take over then for this case while she recuses herself. I will read the first case into the record, and then we'll go from there. The owner is Area Agency Properties Incorporated. The applicant is Area Agency of Greater Nashua, Inc., doing business as Gateway Community Services. The address is 4 Beard Street, Sheet 68, Lot 142. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area where 34,840 square feet is required and 10,454 square feet is existing. This would be to remove an existing single-family house and construct a three-story, up to a 10-unit multifamily building. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 3. It looks like we have our applicant, so please go ahead, and you know the, please just state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Shaw, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Pruney and Pearlman here of Nashua. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Area Agency Properties. Excuse me, that's the owner. The applicant is Area Agency of Greater Nashua. With me tonight is Ethan Beals from Hanner Swanson, our project engineer. With us also is Michelle Beany, the Director of Development for Gateways, and Carol Coolen from Family Support Advisory Council. Ask any questions on the way, because some of you may or may not be familiar with what, what Gateway does. Just to give you a brief background, our property owner is Area Agency Properties Incorporated. The applicant is Area Agency of Greater Nashua Incorporated, both doing business as Gateway Community Services. If you're not familiar with Gateways, let me give you just a two-minute little explanation of what Gateway does. In 1975, the New Hampshire Legislature enacted RSA 171A entitled "Services for the Developmentally Disabled." And what New Hampshire did is they established 10 areas throughout the state with the intent of that nonprofit corporations would be established in each of those 10 areas in the state to work hand-in-hand with the Division of Health and Human Services to provide services to the development, I'm going to get tripped on with that all night, the developmentally disabled community. And that community is focused on autism, soldiers with PTSD, children growing up needing services, and it runs the gamut. And so, there are 10 agencies throughout New Hampshire, Claremont, Keene, Berlin, Portsmouth. And Gateways is the, the Area Agency for the Greater Nashua area. Gateways itself started in 1981 as a small company providing services for the developmentally disabled, and today it now services over 300, 3,000, rather, individuals in the, again, in the Greater Nashua area. Gateways purchased 4 Beard Street and has been using 4 Beard Street for some time since 1990 for their residents that they service. And we had had a couple of handouts for the Board. I just wanted to make sure you received them. First off was a very helpful two-page explanation, the scope of the summary of work. I hope you had a chance to take a look at that. It's a good explanation of what Gateway is looking to do at this site, which I'll get into. And the second handout that we had was a chart that Ethan and I put together. It looks like this. Did you get, you get this? Because I have extra copies. If you don't, okay, fantastic. Great, great, great. Pretty good. So, what? Gateways is looking to do with this site is twofold. Gateway hopes to take the building down and put up a new building, and you have, you have the plan, you have the footprint that from Hanner Swanson, it's just a plain rectangular, plain vanilla rectangular building. But what they want to do is two things. They want to provide housing for their residents that need the services of Gateway's staff. And secondarily, and this is where it gets, it's the unique proposal, they want, Gateway wants to have housing, affordable housing for some of their staff on-site. And it's a unique proposal. It's the first in the state of all the area agencies that are going to combine both residential uses for their, for their clients, as well as affordable housing for their staff. Their staff, it's, it's no secret, the housing crisis in New Hampshire today, the staff needs affordable housing, and so they're looking to combine the two. And in doing so, this checks a lot of boxes. This is a very positive thing. Nashua likes this because it's going to include in, Nashua's recently enacted inclusionary zoning, or to have affordable housing in the city. Medicaid likes this because Medicaid is getting away from having isolated just facilities that have only disabled, disabled folks living there, but they want to see a mix of disabled folks and non-disabled folks living together. And the Division of Health and Human Services likes this proposal because if it works, they're going to try and replicate it throughout the state. And so, it's, it's, it's a very positive proposal. Gateway is very excited about it. Division of Health and Human Services is watching this to see if it works, and funders of these organizations are watching this one. And, you know, we hope with your assistance tonight and the planning board in the future that we will be able to proceed. We are seeking a variance from Section 190-16, the density tables. We are seeking a variance to allow up to 10 units at this site. Now, our, our application initially came in seeking six two-bedroom units, but then our team kept thinking about and kept churning on this thing and said, well, we're not quite sure how the internal layout is going to work out. You know, we're, that's, that's going to come down the road, but, so we're asking from this Board some flexibility to go up to 10 units. It may be that the architects can only squeeze in eight units or nine, but we're looking for that flexibility to allow services for the residents and also the affordable housing component. The footprint that you see with the plan, that's not going to change. It's a tight site. It's a challenging site. It is, it has physical constraints that, I don't know if you folks have gone by, but the topography of the site is challenging. We go down from, down Beard Street, and it's a really tricky lot to get in. I think Ethan and his Hanner Swanson team, they've really maxed out what could be done at this site, so the footprint won't change, but we're just requesting the flexibility from this Board to allow up to 10 units. Beard Street, as I mentioned, just to talk about the site for a little bit, going from Auburn Street down to Fletcher. It's, it's a tricky site. It has unusual, a very steep topography, dropping off as you head down to Fletcher, plus the access is unusual, and then it's an access easement. There's a big parking lot in back of all the buildings behind Beard and Auburn and Fletcher that has many, many users having access easy to get to their properties, so it's an unusual site in that regard. The neighborhood, as you can see from our, the chart that we put together, and I understand you have a plan that looks like this, that the city put together, the neighborhood is a very, it's fair to say it's a very healthy mix of businesses along Amherst Street and the Frasca and Frasca office on Auburn, and some other small businesses in the area, but some, some single families, but mostly it's a multifamily neighborhood. And if you look to our chart that we put together, you can see that what we're proposing in our square footage per unit to our, to our immediate neighborhood, not as big as the plan that the city put together, but just our immediate neighborhood, we're right smack dab in the middle of square footage per unit, what we're proposing, what we're requesting. So, we're comfortable that we're going to be meeting the character of the neighborhood, and we're not going to have any adverse impact to any of the property around us. In your packet, you should have a letter from Welcoming Light. Welcoming Light is a subsidiary of Harbor Homes, recently rebranded as Harbor Care. Harbor, excuse me, Welcoming Light is the owner of the big parking lot in the back. They're the owner of the access easement. We've talked to them. They do not have an issue with what we're doing. They're both in the social service sector, and they work complementary to one another, so it was not a hard sell on our part to request their support, and they support our proposed plan that you have before you tonight. I don't, I don't, I don't think you received anything, but bear with me. The property at 63 Auburn, I will represent to you, is owned by the Goetheer family. My partner, Jerry, and I worked with the Goetheer family for many, many years. I talked to them. They don't have an objection. I asked for them to send in an email. I'm not sure they did, but I will represent to you that they, those folks who, again, share the accessway, again, share the parking lot, they did not have any concern or objection to what's being proposed to you tonight. And the, again, the summary of work that the Gateways submitted, that was a good explanation of what, what they're seeking to do. This is an ideal site, downtown core, it's walkable for our residents. The residents live there, are, lost the word. They, they're semi-independent. They don't need 24/7 care. They get two jobs. They're not going to have any cars, so that's why they need to be in downtown area. So, our parking works because they're not going to have any cars, and the location is ideal, and Gateway really wants to proceed with this, with this new proposal. With that, Mr. Chairman, I was going to turn to my variance criteria, unless the Board had any questions along the way.
Please go ahead.
We do not believe the proposal would be contrary to the public interest, and I'm not going to read word for word from my, from my application, but we provide housing services to the development of disabled adults. The proposal will have both residents and staff on-site. We believe this fits the character of the neighborhood and will not impact any public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, just the opposite, we'll be helping public health and safety and welfare. Similarly, with the spirit of the ordinance, we have a dense downtown neighborhood, but there's a mix of multi, single-family homes. We do not conflict with the purposes of 190-16, given the density of the neighborhood, and we won't have any negative impacts on any public rights. We believe the substantial justice will be done because this is a win-win all around. This provides additional services for the development of disabled community. It provides a unique opportunity to have affordable housing on-site, and is, we don't see any negative impact to the city, so the balancing those factors weighs in favor of the applicant. Again, when I said at the outset, we don't see that we have any impact upon property values. And with respect to the hardship, I spoke about the unique nature of this site, this particular lot. It's a challenging lot. Again, Hanner Swanson's done what they can with this lot. We believe we have, we have a residential use in a residential district, so we have a reasonable use under the New Hampshire case law, and we don't see any fair and substantial reason to prohibit the proposal that's before you tonight. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, my team could answer questions. I could answer questions, anything from the Board.
Do they have questions? Looks like we're all set. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Yeah, I wanted to speak.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Yep, Antoine Alford. I'm a property owner across the street from 4 Beard Street.
Can you just give us the number of the property, just so we?
Yep, 1 Beard Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm currently living in a two-family house on Beard Street, which is a very small street. I myself do a lot of, you know, calling up the city when I see trash all over the street, when there's ice on the road, and no one can get up the hills. You know, I'm the one that's calling the city and, you know, kind of really being the, the watch person on that street. I am familiar with 4 Beard Street, and, you know, they're pretty, they're, so they're pretty quiet people over there. I have no problems with them. I mean, it's been a couple of times I had to go over there and let them know their trashcans are, you know, tipped over and trash is all over the place. You know, although I did pick it up. My thing is that, that, you know, I lived there, and I really don't feel like more traffic coming up that street is going to be something that I'm comfortable with, you know, as well as changing a variance for that side because you have two other buildings that could have had the opportunity to do the same thing as well. You know, so if we do a variance to install a, you know, to build the big building, three-story, 10-unit building, that's just going to open up other possibilities for other people to try to do the same thing. So, I'm sure Goethe is with it because that gives him the opportunity to say, well, maybe I can go up high and spend. I think that resident, the way it is, should stay low, low-key, so, you know, the people that do live in that area can still feel like they're in a residential area and not on Main Street. I understand you guys want to, you know, have your employees work there, but that's more traffic in and out, and, you know, there's only so much parking on the street, so when it comes to guest visitors and stuff like that, you know, that's parking that they're going to be taking up on the street. I, I just don't, I just don't, I just don't see like that it's a great idea to build a three-story building on such a residential street. It's a very quiet street as it is, and, and doing that's going to make it downtown. And if I wanted to live downtown, I would have moved downtown. So, hopefully, the Board would take that in consideration. I mean, it's already busy. We, we got Factory Street already built, put like 200 units, which is crazy traffic from that. I mean, you could hardly get out. My only way to get out now is really through Auburn Street to Amherst Street, if I want to go downtown, but, you know, forget about going down towards, what's that street? Factory Street, not Factory Street, the street that, the new development that's over there. Forget the name of the street. I think that's over there probably where the coffee shop is.
Franklin Street, I believe.
Yeah, Franklin Street. Yep, Franklin Street. So, it's a busy, it's getting a bit, you know, we, we got too much traffic. It's a busy area, and we're just adding to it. You know, I, I, like I said, I respect what Gate City is trying to do. It's just that it's going to be uncomfortable as a resident like myself to, you know, go on my porch and now look at a big business and right across the street from you, you know. A three-story building on that, on the terrain that you're on is going to almost look like a four-story building to, in front of my house because you guys are on the hill.
One minute.
Okay, sir, you only have a minute left if there's anything else you want to say. Also, you might have misunderstood my instructions. I was only asking for testimony in favor. I'm pretty sure your testimony is more with at least questions or concerns or maybe opposition. So, I just want to clarify that, at least what I'm hearing is that, that you're not in support of this. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Is there anybody else on Zoom that has questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, is he not Attorney Pearlman? You can come back and respond to that.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Couple things. First of all, in the summary of work that Gateway's provided, they explained that this building has reached the end of its useful life, and the building, whether or not this proposal goes forward, or they do, or they just replace what's there today, is, the building has to come down. It's not worth putting any more money into it. The building is going to run down as it is. But with respect to the comments from the gentleman, from 1 Beard, perhaps he didn't hear me, the residents of Gateway's who will be living in the site do not drive. They don't have cars, they don't have licenses, it's not part of the program, so the only cars that are going to be coming and going are the staff who are going to be living there, and then the staff who may be there from time to time to assist with the residents. We have a plan that shows seven parking spaces. We don't expect to use seven parking spaces. There's no street parking. We don't see, this is going to generate much traffic at all. The planning board has a traffic input, traffic impact threshold worksheet that we have to work on to determine whether or not we have to do a traffic study or not. We're not going to meet the thresholds of the traffic study. There's going to be very little traffic impact from this site. And finally, this Board knows each variance has a stand on its own. One variance is not a precedent for the next one, so we believe that we have a good application, a good presentation, a good asset for the city. There'll be minimal traffic coming to and from this site. Thank you.
Thank you. And sir, you are welcome to do a final rebuttal. If you have anything else to say, you also don't need to. It's your choice if you want to reply to anything that Attorney Pearlman just said. We just don't, we just ask that you don't bring up any new testimony at this point in time.
No, I mean, I pretty much said what I needed to say as far as the traffic and as far as the height of the building. You know, I, I don't, I don't know how many, you know, the finished project, I don't know how many feet it would be, but I know that, you know, I really don't want to stare at a big, tall building in front of, you know, when I go out and sit on my porch, you know. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's really the planning board that's going to make the decision, but I figure I show up just to, you know, show that I'm not really in favor of it. I mean, you guys, if you guys could figure out a way to keep the, keep the height down, I, I, I would be, that would, that would be the greatest thing, but to stare at a big building when I walk outside of my house, I, you know, I don't want to see that.
Thank you, sir. All right, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your thoughts?
The, the proposal is unique as far as, you know, we've seen, again, not comparing, but we've seen some other conventions. but we've seen some other conventions, like behind Lake Street, which is a four-story building that they have parking across the street. So, you know, that's unique itself. This is unique because, you know, it's being testified that this is not a residence where there would be a lot of parking. There is no variance here for the height of the building. So this building is an approved structure to be this height, right, in this area. So, you know, it could be two units and four stories if somebody wants to build that. So I guess what I'm saying is that I understand what the gentleman is saying for One Beard Street. But again, we don't have a variance in front of us for the height of the building. So I think that the use is, is, I would say, almost in concert with the neighborhood because we have a lot of other multi-unit buildings in the area. And I feel that the impact of what that currently has for residents in parking and stuff, I think that's really kind of the main issue there in traffic. I believe, you know, from my testimony, that this will be a lesser impact than the existing properties that are in the area. So for those reasons, I believe at this point I'm going to support the application unless I hear something differently.
Mr. Minkara, your thoughts?
I, I do support the application, certainly for the reasons Mr. Boucher said. But this is, this is a very mixed neighborhood in terms of the types of uses. There is other supportive housing located in close proximity to the area. I think overall the density, I think, as we've seen, is consistent with what we see in the neighborhood. And really the size does as well. I think as Mr. Boucher noted, although I do appreciate the borough's concerns about the height of the building, you know, the height, it isn't allowed in this district. And there are multiple three-level buildings in the immediate surrounding area. So I think it's consistent with the overall character of the area. And what's being proposed is certainly needed and I think consistent with the city's overall housing goals. I don't see that it would propose, you know, oppose any detriment to surrounding property values. I appreciate the concerns around parking and traffic. But I think as has been noted, there would be really very little traffic or parking associated with this use. So I don't see the neighborhood being adversely impacted in that way. So overall, I think this is a very reasonable use of the property that is proposed. And it certainly is a very, well, I should say, somewhat, if not very unusual lot, given its location and its topography.
Mr. Lionel, your thoughts?
I'm also in support of the application. And we've been asked to, to provide a variance against density. And as we have seen, the density, the proposed density is sort of in the middle of what other units in that immediate area have. I believe it is a reasonable use. I believe it's of great benefit to, to the community, to the neighborhood. And I'm looking forward to seeing the success of the approach that's being taken here with the onsite staff that get to live there.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor of this application for the reasons stated by my colleagues.
Thank you.
I am in support as well. I mean, I think also, and probably worth talking about a little bit, is that I think from what I saw in the application, three units would already be allowed based on allowed density. We already talked about how the size and height of the building is not being proposed to require some sort of area variance relief. So even if we didn't approve this request, the applicant could still build a three-story building with just three units in it. And I think that would at least still potentially not alleviate the concern that we did hear from, from the neighbor. But I think these 10 units, or at least the potential to be up to 10 units, are going to be, by all understanding, low intensity, probably mostly single occupancy and that kind of thing. So, so I think even though the number also sounds larger, I think it's going to be unlike many other higher-density structures as well. So I think they're just, you know, kind of multiple additional reasons why I think this is a reasonable request. And I am in support.
Would anybody care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the application for Area Agencies Properties, Inc., applicant Gateway Community Services at Four Beard Street, be approved, or I should back up. They're requesting a variance from land use code section 19016, table 16-3 for minimum land area. 34,840 square feet required, 10,454 square feet existing. To remove an existing single-family house and construct a three-story, up to 10-unit multifamily building, be approved. It's in the RC zone in Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved for some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. And we found this primarily because of cert, first of all, certain characteristics of the property itself, including the slope of the property, the road leading up to it, the, and the unusual condition with the shared driveway and shared parking. But most importantly, we find that the density, that the use of the proposed is reasonable, that it's consistent with the density of the surrounding area. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and that it would actually help to meet the city's housing-related goals, that it would not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. There was no testimony provided that it would have an adverse impact on surrounding property, although there were concerns expressed of the overall impact. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. In fact, it would support the public interest as for the reasons stated earlier, and that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes 5-0 unanimously. You certainly know the, the deal with, but this goes for all others too, than anybody else that's got a concern. There is a 30-day window of appeal. So if anybody has questions or concerns about pursuing that, if they believe the board erred in its decision-making tonight, you can contact the planning department, Mr. Falk, and Mr. Cho to get further information. And with that, we'll close out that case.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'll give Mr. McKay a moment to come back up to take back over the gavel. At least the virtual gavel.
Case number two. Stephanie C. Houghton, owner, Kathleen Brady, her and sir salon applicant, 226 Broad Street, shee E. Lot 108, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-119A4 to expand an existing hair salon into adjacent tenant space. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Is there someone here to present this application?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Bradley. I'm the owner of her and sir hair salon.
And can you state your name and address? And if you need to, can you please pull the mic so that you can hear? I noticed even sitting back there, if people are not almost on top of this microphone, you can't hear.
I'm Kathleen Bradley. I live at 6 Stillwater Drive in Nashua. I'm the owner of her and sir hair salon at 226 Broad Street. And I have applied for a special exception to expand the salon that I currently have at 226 Broad Street to the, the adjacent unit.
And did you have anything else you wanted to state about the case?
I don't know what else you would be looking for. This is special exception. Let's make sure you sign the...
Did they sign the...
Madam Chair, they, there's really no affidavit that they need to sign. There's, there's sufficient parking on the site. And they had come before the board six or seven years ago and received a variance for this use because it's in an R9 zone. They got approval from that unanimously. And she's just looking for a small expansion to the tenant space next door. I forgot how many square feet it was. It was like, I think about 700 or 800 square feet.
About 800, yeah.
It wasn't a large space next door, but it'll be right, the adjacent tenant space next to, next to her in the building, the existing building. Our staff has been out and visited the site and drove around. And we don't see any parking issues there or anything. And it's a pretty quiet site overall.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw?
What was the tenant space that you're looking to expand into? What was that most recently previously used for?
It was a medical office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No other questions? And is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, sure. State your name and address for the record, please. And if you need to, you can take the mic right from that. Good job.
Excuse me. My name is Stephanie Houghton. I own the building, 226 Broad Street in Nashua. I live at nine-story Brook Lane in Amherst. And we, as has been previously stated, there was a medical doctor who has moved to the southern United States. And when we decided to put the, put the unit back on the market, we did not want to have three businesses, three types of businesses. And this, it's just a small office building. And we thought it would be more consistent to have two separate businesses rather than three and a lot more organized and able to, to keep it with the spirit of the building. And Kathleen's business has been very good for the, for the building. It's very respectful. Everybody that comes is very respectful. And it works well because my husband and I run a dental office there. We, we use three of the five units. And our business is during the day. Most of it is, well, all of ours is during the day. Most of Kathleen's is during the early evening, late afternoon and early evening. And so these two businesses work very well together in terms of parking. And we do have a lot of the same clientele. It's, we would love for her to be able to expand into the, the next unit.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will ask, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr....
You can have a seat.
Oh, you can have a seat. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this application. I think it's a great use. It's a, again, it is a quiet site. And the proposal isn't going to impact the neighborhood or create any safety issues. So I, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor of this application. This is a unique commercial building in the R9 zone, two very complementary businesses. I did do a drive-by. There was a ton of open parking. I don't see a whole lot of extra traffic being added to this, to this addition, which is always a concern with, with Broad Street. You know, they, they have been here before, the board before. It's a pretty straightforward application. Really, I see no reason not to, to move forward with this special exception.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support of the application. The existing business, obviously, this will be consistent with what's going on there, just a small expansion. I don't see any reason, again, not to approve the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I also support the application for the reasons stated.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Likewise in support. And I do think that, you know, the consistency of the business usage will, you know, with it just being an expansion of something that already exists there. But I also think it's noteworthy that as far as, I think, the intensity of use, by no appearance would be any more intense than what was there with the medical office previously. So I think no concerns.
Thank you. And I too am in support. I know the area, there's plenty of parking out there. And I think I like the idea of keeping it to two businesses and expanding the one doesn't really impact as much as if you would have something brand-new coming in. So in that case, is there somebody who would care to make... Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Stephanie Houghton. The applicant is Kathleen Bradley, her and sir hair salon, address 226 Broad Street, shee E. Lot 108, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-119A4 to expand an existing hair salon into an adjacent tenant space. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Board finds that this is listed in the table of uses. We have no testimony that it will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And several members of the board have observed that it is a, there's plenty of parking. So there's not, and we also have testimony from the applicant that the businesses there have complementary times of use so that there won't be overcrowding. The board believes it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. All special regulations are fulfilled. We have testimony of that. And it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. Therefore, I make a motion to approve this special exception.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That's a unanimous decision. Congratulations, your special exception has been granted. As we've stated previously, any decision made by this board, any member of the public has 30 days with which to appeal. Other than that, congratulations, good luck, and good luck with the expansion. I think the only thing we had the biggest problem with was saying the, what was it? The her and, no, the her and sir. That, her and sir salon, say that three times fast. Thank you.
Thank you very much, too.
Moving on. Okay, now we will approach the rehearing. The first one is we have a motion for a rehearing request. Let me read into the record exactly how they worded it. The rehearing request from variance denial at 9/26/23 ZBA public hearing. Sam Katz, the owner, 36 Granite Street, shee 44, lot 37, requesting variance from land use... Use Code Section 190-17B to allow two principal structures on one lot where only one is permitted in the RB Zone, Ward 3. I think I will ask each of us, or maybe get the discussion, does anybody here feel there were any procedural errors? This would include improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. And everyone can weigh in. The voting members will be Mr. Lionel, Mr. Minkara, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw, and myself. Would it be easier if I roll called people and asked...
That probably would work better, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lionel?
There were no procedural errors.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
There were no procedural errors. We had a very spirited conversation with many folks who stood up and testified.
Mr. Minkara?
Yes. I mean, I think the essence of the argument that's being made is that the board failed to make specific findings of fact to support its decision. But in looking at the notice of decision, I think it rested on the fact that the board did not find there were any special conditions of the property, and that was pretty clearly stated. So I don't believe there were procedural errors.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
No, I don't, no.
Mr. Shaw?
I don't see any other.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I didn't see anything as I read through everything. No procedural errors. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Mr. Lionel?
No, it was not. And in fact, I made the motion for this particular case. And one of the requirements is that all five points of law are required to be met. And as I made clear in my motion, not all five points were met. Did we discuss others that might have been met? Maybe, you know, some we did, some we kind of glossed over. But the fact that there were conditions that were not met meant that we had to deny the variance. So I don't believe this was an illegal decision.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
I believe the crux of the appeal, from what I was led to understand here, is that the applicant did not feel like we adequately addressed all of their concerns. I disagree with that assessment. Having gone back and read through the record, it was a very well put together record by the staff. It is very easy to find online to see what we discussed. That was the first thing I checked to make sure you could easily pull up these notes. So for those reasons, I believe everything we did was legal.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I agree. I think it was legal. I spent, I spent a fair amount of time, you know, kind of thinking about this and going through this, but I agree with Mr. Lionel's conclusion. It's not that the board found that every criteria was not met. It found that they did not meet the most, well, I don't want to say the most important, but because we found the hardship was not satisfied, it was denied. And again, the reasons for that were clearly stated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher?
No. I also echo what Mr. Minkara and Mr. Lionel just spoke about.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw?
And I likewise concur with my fellow board members. I don't see that there was any illegal decision made.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I agree. What Mr. Lionel and Mr. Minkara said was an accurate representation of everything that I read. So I agree with my fellow board members. Does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Lionel?
No, it does not.
Mr. Neely?
No, it does not. The, it was quite a long presentation and all the criteria was presented at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
No, it does not.
Mr. Boucher?
No, it does not.
Mr. Shaw?
It does not.
And I agree, no, it does not. Maryelle McKay, is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And Maryelle McKay, myself, no. In this instance, at this point, since we have gone over all four points and we have unanimously reached the decision that the answer is no to all four points, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Lionel?
Excuse me, just pointed, I need to get some clarification.
Absolutely.
So I have, I'm taking the minutes here. I notice there's a no, yes, and vote in each of the questions. Does there have to be a specific vote?
Yes, there does have to be a vote. Well, first of all, we, in the past, when we've done this, we've had a separate vote on each of the points. And we can do that this time. And I think that we should do that.
Okay.
And so I will read, and then Ms. McKay can do the roll call and for those members who will be voting, and will vote on each point. Is that acceptable? Yep, okay. This is a rehearing request from owner Sam Katz. The quester was attorney Chris Swimyarsky of Divine Millamette &amp; Branch. Address, case address 36 Granite Street in Nashua. This is a request from the variance denial of the September 26, 2023 zoning board of adjustment, Plowback Hearing, requested a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17B to allow two principal structures on one lot where only one is permitted. And this was the RB Zone, Ward 3. The first point regarding the rehearing request, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. This is a vote, so I need a second on that one. Mr. Shaw, thank you for the second.
Okay, so, Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes no.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
No.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote no. Would it be easier if we took the vote on each point right now?
Yes.
Okay. Point, point two.
Was an illegal decision. In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance?
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, no.
Does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing?
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
And Mr. Shaw?
No.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, no.
And last, is there anything which would cause, would or could cause the board to make a different decision?
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, no.
One final motion?
Did you, is, Mr. Falk?
Mr. Shaw seconded all.
Nope, we didn't have, who seconded that? I don't think we had a second.
Yeah, we didn't.
Because we didn't complete the motion. And then we went to the vote.
It should now be one overall motion, like...
Yes.
Yeah.
Something like, based upon the board's deliberation for all four questions, motion made by Mr. Lionel, and all of them are no.
And then we would need the second. And Mr. Shaw, okay.
Motion would be to deny the rehearing request.
Yes, so, yeah, all right, we'll, given each, all of the, each of the voting board members voted no to each of the points, make a motion to not, to deny the rehearing request.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay, and now...
And we'll vote on that, yeah.
Take a vote on the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Lionel? How do you vote?
I vote in favor of denying.
That's right. We have to stop and think of that. Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor of the denial.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
And Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor of the denial. We have nobody in the room.
Yes, ma'am.
I think he left. Well, is there somebody on Zoom for this?
Well, we don't take any testimony.
Oh, that's right. We don't take any testimony. No, I wondered if I was, you know, to let somebody know the rehearing request has been denied.
Well, it's in the record.
It is in the record. Okay, the next, the next rehearing, the NEH Realty LLC. The quester is attorney Daniel DeShanes, Hinckley Allen, PA, 91 Deerwood Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. Rehearing request from appeal of administrative decision denial at 10/24/23 ZBA Public Hearing. NEH Realty LLC owner, Regent Park Associates, appellant 91 Deerwood Drive. Sheet H Lot 90, requesting appeal of administrative decision pursuant to Land Use Code Section 190-136B that ad appeal was submitted within the 30-day timeframe as prescribed by the zoning board of adjustment bylaws number 15, PI Zone, Ward 1. Okay. Was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard. Mr. Neely?
No, all folks in attendance and on Zoom were able to adequately express their views.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
There was no procedural error.
Mr. Minkara?
See no procedural error.
Mr. Boucher?
Sign on procedural error also.
Mr. Shaw?
I see no procedural errors.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also see no procedural errors. Do we want to take the vote now?
We can...
Or do we do it at the end of the motion the way we did previously?
Yeah, I think we should just do it at the end, but we would go around and offer our opinions. Mr. Falk, is that a reasonable thing to do?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. I'll move on to the second point. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Lionel?
I will say, it was not an illegal decision, although this was neither a special exception or a variance. So it's kind of a weird, weird thing. But it was, it was not illegal. We followed the rules.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
No, it was not illegal. And I would just add to that, that in essence, it seems to be what they're alleging is that we didn't give, you know, a fair hearing to the petitioner and that he's arguing, you know, we didn't give him the opportunity to state his arguments. And I think the record very, very clearly shows that we did at length. And that, in fact, the request for the rehearing simply restates the facts. I don't see any error alleged whatsoever or any illegality.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
I also think, and I just want to also just highlight in, you know, the argument, the narrative argument was that we acted unlawfully, unreasonably failed to adequately address, excuse me, adequately consider the appellant's arguments. And I think we very much considered, very much listened to, and made sure we took in all that information. I think it simply, to me, seems like a statement of they didn't agree with our decision, and so they're calling it unlawful. But I think we did all the things we were supposed to. We just came to a decision that was not consistent with what the applicant wanted.
I concur. I think we did a really thorough job, actually. Very much so. Does the board request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Neely?
As Mr. Minkara stated, this is a complete just restatement of the original facts. So for that reason, I say no.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, also no. And the fourth point, is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Minkara?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And Maryelle McKay, no. Now, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Lionel, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of NEH Realty LLC. Requester is attorney Daniel DeShane, Hinckley Allen, PA, case address 91 Deerwood Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. Rehearing request from appeal of administrative decision denial at the October 24, 2023 ZBA Public Hearing pursuant to Land Use Code 190, Section 190-136B that an appeal was submitted within the 30-day timeframe as prescribed in the ZBA bylaws, item R15. The board finds in our discussion that there was no procedural error, that it was not an illegal decision, that the request did not contain any new information, and that there was nothing that would or could cause the board to make a different decision. Therefore, I make a motion to deny the rehearing request.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. And now we will vote on each point.
Well, we're voting on the whole motion.
Oh, we're voting on the whole motion?
Yes.
I thought we had to go point by point.
We don't have to, no. We've, we've discussed it point by point, and we're on record with our discussion.
Fine. Okay. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote on the motion to deny the rehearing request?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote on the motion to deny the rehearing request?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote on the motion to deny the rehearing request?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote on the motion to deny the rehearing request?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor of the motion to deny the rehearing request. And that is five to zero. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on. We have no, we just have no agenda, so we just have approval of the minutes.
Our next meeting isn't until January 9th, so...
So we have a few weeks off.
We're still accepting applications. And as soon as an agenda is ready, we'll email it to everybody.
And just to, just in case, people who weren't here, the meeting of January 23rd was moved to the 24th.
That's correct. Yeah, I believe we changed it all.
It's the presidential primary day.
Oh. Okay, then. Okay, on the minutes, did anyone see any errors, edits, adjustments for the minutes? Okay, as written?
Nope. Assuming Mr. Boucher was quite busy then.
I'm thinking.
Chairman and clerk.
He was busy. Then I think I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 28, 2023. Would somebody care to make a second? Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor. That concludes the business of our meeting. And I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And Mr. Minkara, those who all celebrate Hanukkah. I know that that happened the 7th. It started, correct?
I think it started last Thursday, yes.
And I guess, those who would like... And I guess, those who would like to attend after this meeting, welcome to attend at Martha's. And we're adjourned at?
7:40.
7:40.